Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, March 8, 2022. I have a meeting announcement. Council members are encouraging or welcoming virtual public participation in council chambers. All meetings will be live due to the pandemic. All meetings will be livestreamed on the city channel, on the city website and the city channel Pittsburgh YouTube channel. Will the clerk please take the roll call?
Reverend Burgess? Mr. Coghill?
Here.
Ms. Gross?
Here.
Mr. Kraus?
Here.
Mr. Lavelle?
Here.
Mr. O'Connor?
Here.
Ms. Strasburger?
Here.
Mr. Wilson? Mrs. Kale Smith, President?
Here.
Seven members present.
Thank you. As we join from our remote locations and in person, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. Today, we are joined by the St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman O'Connor, who are Councilman O'Connor's guests, and they will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please begin.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend the agenda?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda is amended. And our next order of business is proclamations, and we have one to be presented by Councilman Corio O'Connor and daughter.
Yeah. Thank you, Madam President. And thank you for letting me go first and for all your support of the parade over the last two weeks as well. So, we are back. So, my wife said, are you going to bring the baby? I said, when I was a kid and my dad did the proclamation, I had to come. So, not that I had to, but I love to come. So, I figured today's Molly's first appearance downtown, so we'll bring her, former Smiling Irish Eyes as well. So, if you guys haven't noticed, we haven't had this big of a parade in two years. We did have one last fall, but we are excited to get the annual St. Patrick's Day Parade kicked off. So, whereas the Pittsburgh St. Patrick's Day Parade, sponsored by the Irish Society for Education and Charity, and the St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee, first held in 1869 and occurring nonstop since 1950, has grown in size and splendor and now consists of 22,000-plus marchers and draws, and I think this year we can cap it, more than 200,000 spectators to downtown Pittsburgh. And whereas, cutting it a little short today, whereas the weekend begins with the annual Button Party, which was held this Friday, followed by a communion breakfast, and then the presentation of the Miss Smiling Irish Eyes crowning this Friday. And whereas, the parade will begin at 10:00 a.m. at the Greyhound bus station and led by this year's Grand Marshal, Peter Shovlin, and will include the Hibernia of the Year, Bob Kelly, and Miss Smiling Irish Eyes, Mackenzie Ridge, and her court, Erin Burkhart and Zoe Mulcarren's. All right? Mulcarren's? Is that right? You can correct me. Mulcarren's, okay, sorry. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby commend all the organizers and participants of the annual St. Patrick's Day Parade, and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby honor the Pittsburgh Irish community and hereby declare the days of March 12th to March 17, 2022, to be St. Patrick's Day Parade Week in the City of Pittsburgh.
Is there a motion and a second?
No.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamation is approved. Congratulations.
I don't want to drop the baby. So, we are actually going to do the picture first, and then if anybody doesn't know Mac McCafferty, he has been the parade chairman for a long time, and he does an amazing job, and he'll come up and tell everybody what's going on for the remainder of the week. But if you don't mind, we'll take the picture first. I have to go to another obligation, so if we can get everybody back up for the picture, Denny, Pat, everybody.
Let me fix this.
I'll fix it. Father's mother was dilated. Her mother.
Can we have, can we have all members of council? Yeah. All members of council, listen, Councilwoman Strasburger and I didn't wear green for nothing. Yeah. Thank you to our Madam Clerk who did the decorations for St. Patrick's Day month. Can we have, can we have all members of council? Yeah. All members of council, listen, Councilwoman Strasburger and I didn't wear green for nothing. Yeah. Thank you to our Madam Clerk who did the decorations for St. Patrick's Day month.
Yeah.
I want to thank everybody for coming out today. This event has been a long time coming. We've had some difficult times with the virus, and last year, we had our little baby parade in the fall, which was a success. My job here is to introduce the people that are our parade royalty for the week. The first person I want to talk about is Pete Shovlin, who was a unanimous pick by the Irish Society to be the Grand Marshal. He's, he's been a total hit. And so, Pete. It took him a while to get here. Do you have anything you want to say? There you go.
Okay. Okay. You know, a proclamation, it's not something you get every day. I feel honored to even be here, and I want to thank the Parade Committee and the City of Pittsburgh and anybody else involved for, for all of this. I thank you all very much.
He was a little briefer today than he was on Sunday. But Pete is, Pete has been a cornerstone of the Irish community in Pittsburgh for, since he got here. I don't know if you could tell, but he's not actually from Pittsburgh originally. He's from somewhere, he's from Donegal. Okay, our Hibernia of the Year this year is, because I'm, thanks, is, and I've known him for a while, is Bob Kelly. Okay, Bob?
I just want to say this is honor and a privilege, and very happy to be here, and I want to thank everybody in the AOH and LAOH, and looking forward to the parade. Thank you very much.
All of them are more brief than I am. Our Miss Smiling Irish Eyes and her court are, I need my glasses for this. Miss Smiling Irish Eyes this year is Mackenzie Bridget Ridge, and our court members are Erin Mary Burkhart and Zoe Mulcarren. Why don't you ladies step up here?
I would just like to say thank you. I am also very excited for the parade.
For school, for schools.
I go to University of Pittsburgh at Johnstown, and I'm originally from like the Fox Chapel area.
Hi, I'm Mackenzie Ridge. I'm very honored and grateful to be Miss Smiling Irish Eyes for the parade this year. I'm from Mount Lebanon in the South Hills, but I attend the University of North Carolina at Charlotte. But I just want to say thank you to my community for picking me for this honor, so.
Hi, I'm Zoe Mulcarren's, and I'm really excited to be here, and I'm super honored, and I'm a sophomore at Seneca Valley.
We're going to take a brief break for a commercial. This is this year's official St. Patrick's Day shirt. This one wouldn't fit on me, but I think Kevin came up with a super design. You can get it at Yinzers and definitely you, which is out on Brentwood. So, they're, they're only 10 bucks. Long sleeves are 15. I just think, you know, he had a winner here with the design and the color. I asked Kevin if, when he made the T-shirts, I said, can you make them some other color than green? When you do this long enough, and you open your cupboard, all there is is green shirts. Like, so whenever I go to pick out what shirt I'm going to wear today, I go like, oh, am I going to wear a green one, or am I wearing it? I think I'll wear green today. I really do appreciate the city and everything they've done for us. The previous administration, Mayor Paduta, was outstanding. Dan Gelman worked with us hard. It's been a difficult couple of years. In the parade, we will also recognize the, the people of Ukraine for the difficulties they're going through, and we're keeping them in our thoughts and prayers. Anybody else? Nope. All right. How's that for brief?
Anybody else? Anybody else? Thank you all. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And I do have to mention that Yinzers has a warehouse in Sheridan. And we have Councilwoman Gross, one proclamation to be read into the record, and then Councilwoman Stras and Councilman Kraus.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill 173. Now therefore be resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh joins Chapter 161 of the NAWIC in recognizing and commending the women who participate in the construction industry throughout our region for their steadfast work, and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh hereby proclaims the week of March 6 through 12, 2022, as the Women in Construction Week. And Councilmembers Strasburger and Kraus present Bill 176. Now therefore be resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby honor Andy Henderson for his contributions to the local entertainment sector, the LGBTQ community, and the spirits of Pittsburghers. Be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare March 10, 2022, to be Andy Henderson Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Can, we have a motion to approve in a second? And second, any discussion? No, just Councilwoman, no discussion? Proclamations are approved. And that moves on to our next order of business, which is public comment. And we'll begin with our registered speakers. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before City Council. Threats and profanity will not be permitted. And just so people know, we have new rules of council for public comment, and our clerk will be doing a couple briefings, or just a couple of videos and, and updates to let the public know, informative sessions to let the public know what they can and cannot do during public comments, and how to, how to comment on our, keeping with our rules of council. And with that said, we have the first, maybe we have the first registered speaker, which is Ronald Lynn Miller. Dr. Miller?
I'm not getting up there until these people leave. You're not, this house is not in order.
Next speaker is Mimi Alman. Alam? Next speaker is Mimi Alman. Is Mimi on the, she's online?
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Belsuver.
Then our next speaker is Carmen Brown.
What you're doing is wrong.
Carmen Brown.
This, this house is not in order.
Ronald Miller will take you, Dr. Miller will take you in order of the speakers. Our next order, commenter is Carmen Brown.
How can you do this? How, President, how can you do this? There were people, people all around, people making noise, and the house was not in order. How can anyone talk when the house is not in order?
You're doing quite a good job. Can we please start the timer? Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Belsuver and Oakland, Tash Kent, and Uzbekistan. Global Intelligence Society, U.S. National Candidate, 2024. Dr. Ron Lynn Miller at DrRonLynnMiller1 is Twitter. Concerns of council include math, nuclearity, and Asian-American Pittsburghers. On math, anti-role model Angelina Jolie to a girl in Salt, 2010. I hate math. Role model Michelle Yeoh, integral calculus in the film Everything Everywhere All at Once, 2022. On nuclearity, I am a member of the American Physical Society, APS, the American Chemical Society, ACS. APS Nuclear Physics Division. Mr. Ganey, or you counselors, are you connected? No. ACS Nuclear Chemical Division. Any of you connected to nuclearity in this way? I don't see it. The APS invited me, among many others, to an online interactive on the viability of our ballistic missile systems. Mr. Ganey, any of you counselors? Zero. On Asia, March 2022 is Asian Intelligence Month. Asian-American Achievement Beyond IQ is a book I recommend by, by James Flynn. Asian Female Intelligence, Zhonghuan Ren, biologist Tu Yu Yu, Nobel Physiology, 1995, 4/2's Anti-Malarial Qing Hao Su. Blackness, whiteness, redness, brownness, yellowness. Is Dr. Tu a banana? Yellow on the outside, white on the inside. A race pejorative Michelle Yeoh assigns to an Asian-American girl in Crazy Rich Asians. See on Becoming Yellow, A Short History of Racist Thinking, Taiwan National University. Did Tu's first-in-class acquisitional informational ability and analytical innovative intelligence come from her yellowness? Because Tu is yellow? I think not. We hear you think X because you are black, because you are white, because you are yellow. This sets up the putrid yellow peril problem from the 1940s.
Our next, we have no further registered speakers. No one else got online, correct? Okay, just to make sure we're not missing. Do we have anyone in the audience who would like to address City Council? I know. Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Brown, then Mr. Ludwig.
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live in the Hill District, up at Katy, where Everett's tires. I have been really, really depressed dealing with this council, especially the president, previous president, Mr. Kraus, who has taken and targeted me anytime he could, even when I turned my head. You must turn to the front. Ms. Rudiac, I looked to the side when I was speaking with them. Mrs. Brown, I wasn't even allowed to look to the window. See, what you need to understand, I come down here because you need to know, I feel that anytime that you have this council of nine people can make a decision on my life and everybody else's life in the community, you make life and death decisions. You do. I am upset anytime that you can have these councilmen, because you don't come down, they'll do their talking, half an hour or more, then run back in the back and go back there, and we're still sitting here. I come because you need to know what's happening in my community. You will never know. Now, also, I was so, I'm telling you, I am really depressed, and I don't want to come. But look what someone brought me. They brought me a gift, and it says, do what you love. I thought it was saying, do you, Ms. Brown, you're loud, if you're loud, be loud, that's part of you. I'm telling you, though, if you are supposed to be our counselors, you know what counselors are? We're supposed to talk stuff over together. We don't know what's happening. And Mr. O'Connor and Ms. Strasburger, since they had children, they stay home with their kids to take care of their children. You got a husband, maybe he needs to stay home and take care of your child, the same way, Mr. O'Connor. I say that because I was a caseworker, and them women that had children had to go out and get a job, go to school, what, in six weeks? How many months have Yinz been playing around? And I come, I'm telling you, I'm upset, but I thank, I didn't even get to tell you, show you all the stuff I got. See the heart, I look at that as love. And I do thank, thank the person, because it says, you have been gifted with a random act of kindness, and I really needed it. And I thank her, and it was the lady that came to head the Indian. The, I can't pronounce it, and I don't want to, I don't want to mess it up, but this kindness counts. This says on her paper, and I want you, everyone of Yinz, when I get to talking about my son, and I'm grieving, everybody grieves different. You understand that? Until you walk in my shoes, when you see a government that can take, that's why I walk out this room, when they do the flag, freedom and justice for all, not in here, not in this, not in this council.
Ms. Brown, next speaker is Les Ludwig.
How come it feels so sad?
Thank you, Madam President. My name is Les Ludwig, 6589 Rosemore Street in Squirrel Hill, and I come to you this morning in a sad state. We, as a society, have failed the test of keeping world peace when we allow the current war to occur. Why does that have to be reviewed here? Because this is the place where we make laws, make regulations, make decisions. Historically, let's look back for a moment. If we look back at the history of man, in the 1700s, we start with Karl Marx, communism, different types of government trying to find the one that is the best one, and as good as we are today, we haven't found a way to keep the peace. We haven't found it here in Pittsburgh or anywhere really in the world. So, I ended up taking a look at it, and I said, we've forgotten something. We dropped something out of the vocabulary of man, and it's time to bring it back to its place. It's called humanism, and humanism is defined in Webster's New World Dictionary dated 1956, so therefore the word existed before that. And it reads as follows, it's a system of thought or action based on the nature, dignity, and ideals of man. We're not carrying them through here in this chamber all the time. We're still short of really being free. We, the people, we're not we, the people. Where are the people? I keep begging you to open the parking lot next door and invite the people so that we are a more of a democracy than we are now. So, I come to implore you that humanism should become a live word and be followed so that we actually will reach the goal that we all want. And what is that goal? I believe it is simply, where are my notes? We all want the same thing in life.
Thank you, Mr. Ludwig.
We have to go ahead and work harder to achieve them.
Thank you, Mr. Ludwig. Have a good day, everyone. And our next order of business is presentation of papers. No further speakers, and there are no further speakers online, correct? We'll now move on to our next order of business, which is the presentation of papers, and we'll begin by Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess, Chair of Urban Recreation.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 174, where it admits amending and supplementing the Pittsburgh City Code at Title II, Fiscal Article VII, Business Related Taxes, by adding 257 Medical and Higher Education Facilities User Privileged Tax pursuant to the authority of the Local Tax Enabling Act 1, 1965, December 31, and the City Home Rule Charter. Bill Number 175, Resolution for the Creation of a Special Trust Fund to be known as the City of Pittsburgh Infrastructure Fund for the deposit of funds to be used for the improvement, maintenance, creation, and operation of infrastructure owned by the City of Pittsburgh.
And Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 164, Resolution Providing for a Third Supplemental Agreement with Michael Baker for Contract Administration and Construction Inspection Service Costs Associated with a Small Grant Projects Agreement, and Providing for the Payment of Costs Relating to the Washington Boulevard Trail Not to Exceed $72,153.53, a $10,469.66 increase from the previous agreement.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Energy Governmental Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 165, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 483, which authorizes a professional services agreement and/or contract with Buchanan, Ingersoll, and Rooney for professional consulting services for federal government affairs and legislative services by extending the term for two additional years and by increasing the authorized amount by $124,000. Bill Number 166, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 484, which authorizes a professional services agreement and/or contract with Malady and Wooten, Inc., for professional consulting services for state government affairs and legislative services by extending the term for two years and by increasing the authorized amount by $132,000.
Thank you. And Councilman Kraus, Chair of Human Resources.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Madam Clerk.
Good morning.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 167, Resolution Amending Resolution 478, which authorizes the mayor and director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance. Service and a director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into an amended professional services agreement and/or a contract with Ceridian Human Capital Management, Inc., by increasing the not-to-exceed amount by $331,227 for services relating to the benefits module and its implementation.
Thank you. And Councilman Leval, Chair of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Leval presents Bill Number 168, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to Enter into a Professional Services Agreement with Exponent, Inc., for Professional Engineering Services in Connection with Claims and Litigation for the Fern Hollow Bridge in an Amount Not to Exceed $175,000.
Thank you. And Councilwoman O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety Services, Councilwoman Leval for Councilman O'Connor. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 169, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of International Trauma Life Support Pennsylvania in an Amount Not to Exceed $6,600 for Trauma and Life Support Certifications Necessary to the Mission of the Bureau of Emergency Medical Services. Bill Number 170, Resolution Amending Resolution 152, Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the city into an amended agreement with the National Association of State Voting Law Administrators for Training and Certification Services Regarding the Department of Public Safety Vote Operations at a Sum Not to Exceed $679,000, and Providing for the Payment of Costs There. Bill Number 171, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 674, Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into an amended license agreement between the City of Pittsburgh and Plaza at Grand View Owners Association at a Cost Not to Exceed $104,400. Resolution Number 674 must be amended in order to correct applicable funding accounts in future lease years.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Strausberger, Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management. Thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilwoman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. And myself, Chair of Hearings, I have no new papers. We will now move on to any unfinished businesses. Are there any unfinished business before council? Seeing none, we'll move on to reports of committee for final action, and we'll begin with Councilwoman Leval, Daniel Leval, Committee on Finance and Law. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Leval presents Bill Number 161, Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for March 2, 2022, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 95, Resolution Establishing the Pittsburgh Affordable Housing Implementation and Finance Committee. Bill Number 109, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Ronald James Madero in the Amount of $125,000 relating to the full and final settlement of a case filed in the United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania. Bill Number 135, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 647, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2021 Capital Budget, the 2021 CDBG Program, the 2021 Through 2026 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Bridge Upgrades by $1,700,000 and Increasing 30th Street Bridge by $1,700,000. Bill Number 136, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 886, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2022 Capital Budget, the 2022 CDBG Program, and the 2022 Through 2027 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Bridge Preservation and Restoration Fund by $800,000 and Increasing 30th Street Bridge by $800,000. Bill Number 137, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 713, Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Finance to enter on behalf of the city into an amended agreement of sales with Smith and Boeing and all the documents necessary to purchase 80 Wabash Street, along with two vacant parcels adjacent thereto, for a total amount not to exceed $374,000, which includes the purchase price of $344,000 plus up to $30,000 in acquisition costs for the purpose of continued operation of the city's West End Healthy Active Living Center. Bill Number 139, Resolution Repelling Items and Resolutions Approved on Various Dates, which authorizes sale of property in various wards of the city due to an incompletion of sale, Item 8, 7110 Race. Bill Number 140, Resolution Providing for the Conveyance by the City of Certain Property Having Been Placed for Sale to Adjourning Property Owners in Conjunction with the City of Pittsburgh Side Yard Program, Item A and B, 220 Carver and 7127 Race.
Thank you. You've heard the reading in the title of bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are all ready for final passage or action. All in favor of the passage, with I when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess? Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Grace?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Leval?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor? Ms. Strausberger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kale Smith, President?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
The bills have received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. That moves us on to Councilman Anthony Coghill, Committee on Public Works. Thank you, Councilman.
Yep.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 162, Report of the Committee on Public Works for March 2, 2022, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 128, Resolution Providing for an Agreement with CDM Smith for Construction Inspection and Contract Administration Services for the 30th Street Bridge Preservation Project, and Providing for the Payment of Costs Not to Exceed $384,401.24. Bill Number 129, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 662, entitled, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Apply for a Grant from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County's Gaming Economic Development Fund for up to $500,000 to Provide Funding for the Construction of a Pedestrian Bridge at David's Avenue to Accept the Grant and Authorize Necessary Expenditures. Bill Number 130, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Receive Grant Funding from the Pennsylvania, from the Southwestern Pennsylvania Commission under the Congestion Mitigation and Air Quality Improvement Program Funding for the Frankstown Avenue Signal Replacement Project in an Amount of $3,322,679. Bill Number 131, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 659, entitled, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Apply for a Grant from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County's Gaming Economic Development Fund for up to $500,000 to Provide Funding for the Development of the West End Trolley Trail to Accept the Grant and Authorize Necessary Expenditures.
Thank you. You've heard the reading in the title of bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, I'm going to add a little bit there. I just want to thank the previous administration, the previous administration before that, and the current administration for finally seeing this trolley trail through to fruition. It's been a lot of years and a lot of time, and the community for their work on the trail. And just for those who don't know, we have a lot of people that bike and walk in this area, and they're doing so on Nobles Town Road, which with that little bike share, it's a little bit more challenging. And it's also an area that we had slope remediation issues, and we were able to get that addressed through this trolley trail. So they had a lot of benefits through the whole project, and I want to thank Senator Fontana for a lot of the funding that he had, was able to get into our, into our area. Senator Fontana and Representative Deasy. With that said, seeing any further discussion? The bills are now ready for final action, final passage. All in favor, there will vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Grace?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Leval?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor? Ms. Strausberger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kale Smith, President?
Aye.
Eight i, zero n o's.
Thank you. The bills have received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. That moves us on to our last committee of the day, Councilwoman Deborah Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 163, Report of the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for March 2, 2022, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 132, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 201, entitled, Resolution Providing for an Agreement with the Fair Housing Partnership of Greater Pittsburgh to Provide Training under Fair Housing Act to Staff of the City of Pittsburgh, Urban Redevelopment Authority and/or Housing Authority of the City, and to private landlords operating in Pittsburgh, and to provide quarterly presentations and technical assistance on the Fair Housing Act to Staff of the City, the Urban Redevelopment Authority, and/or the Housing Authority of the City, in an Amount Not to Exceed $259,000 to Change the Funding Source for Budget Years 2022 through 2024 to the CDBG Administration Line Item.
Thank you. You've heard the reading in the title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bills are ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, with I when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Grace?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Leval?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor? Mrs. Strausberger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kale Smith, President?
Aye.
Eight i, zero n o's.
Thank you. The bill has received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. Moves us on to motions and resolutions. And tomorrow, I have a few meeting announcements, or just a meeting announcement, actually. Tomorrow morning at 10:00 a.m., council will hold our standing committees meeting. To register to speak, please fill out the signup form on the council meeting webpage by 9:00 a.m. Wednesday morning. You may also call the city clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Is there anything from members? I just, I just think, I just want to thank Councilwoman Gross for meeting yesterday. We all have, trying to figure out what to do with some of the ACBO funding, and she had a really very productive meeting yesterday, and I was thankful to be a part of it. And I want to thank, I think she was really a strong advocate for city council, so I just want to thank you for that. Anything else from members? No? Then I'd like to have a motion to excuse the absent member, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.